All right, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting the Maricopa County Planning Commission to Order. We don't have to do the first one election of acting chairman. There was a mistake on that. And the first item now, which has been switched, thanks to someone in the audience, we will stand up and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands as one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you again for everybody showing up here today in person and whoever's on webinar as well. If we can have roll call, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Landau.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Lindlum.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya.
Commissioner Montoya.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Chairman Schlosser.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Moving on to chairman's announcements, excuse me, this meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office. And they're also available on the planning and development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov/planning. The staff reports prepare for each agenda item should become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present anyone wishing to speak on a particular case, to fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance, or raise your hand within go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. Chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. Chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions in all Moving on to the minutes of the August 31 zipper meeting. Are any changes or comments from the commission? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Item number one on continuance agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's MCP 2023-004, known as AZL-01777, Battle Plan Trunk 1, District 4, is being continued to December 7th. There's no action.
Okay, thank you. So, item number one will be continued to December 7th. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number two. Staff like to present?
I guess, good morning, members of the commission. This is K2022-007, Junior's Recycling Center, a special use permit for interim industrial use to accommodate existing non-conforming recycling collection center in the C3 zoning district. The current land use is an intense industrial use that would be allowed normally in industrial zoning district, but not in commercial zoning district. This business has been operating on the site for four years and does have a current code violation for running industrial business on site in the C3 zoning district. The site itself is located in northeast corner of Apache Trail, 85th Place in the Mesa area. For this case so far, we have received 17 opposition letters and 12, actually, and then also an opposition petition with 12 signatures. And as well, we also have received about seven support letters for this proposal. Other concerns center around noise, dust exposure to possible toxic chemicals, trash in windblown litter, light, risk of fire, and incompatibility with adjacent residences. Staff also received about nine support letters mentioning that this facility is a reasonable distance from residential homes and that it is reasonably run business in an area with many commercial uses. Staff does not support this SUP because this request is not compatible with the adjacent residential area. The site is zoned for heavy commercial use, however, a recycling center does not qualify as a heavy commercial use. A recycling collection center would be more compatible in an industrial area away from residences where noise and other impacts generated from this type of operation would not be an issue. The property owner started this business at a site without due diligent check of the site's zoning and what are the normal allowed uses in the C3 zoning district, which demonstrates a disregard for the neighbors. The current layout of the site with parking in the existing right-of-way and limited space for outdoor storage are and will continue to be an issue on this small site. Allowing the non-conforming use to continue will adversely impact the adjacent residential neighborhood, and the use interferes with the enjoyment of the neighboring properties, which impacts the area's public health, safety, welfare, and convenience. Staff's recommendation is that this SUP request be denied. However, if the commission recommends approval of this SUP, then staff recommends that it do so with conditions A through K listed in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, members of the commission.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the commission of staff? Hearing none is the applicant here, Paul Almond. Do you wish to make a presentation? Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Paul Almond. I represent Junior's Recycling. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. This isn't something I normally do.
Take your time.
You don't want to say that. If I could start, though, I would like to do a brief history of Junior's Recycling. In about 2012, a recycling company by the name of Extreme Recycling started a business also on Main Street here and just about 100 yards to the east of where we currently are. That business ran for a couple of years, and then it got kind of sideways with the landlord. The landlord was going to evict him. The owner of Junior's, and he was at one time an employee of Extreme Recycling, he came in and purchased the business, leaving it where it is, and then for the next four or five years, developed it, helped it grow, made it a success. On about 2019, this property became available, again, within 100 yards of his current operation. It seemed to be perfect for what he wanted to do. There was an existing building, there was a large yard in the back for his use. It seems like, in our opinion, we don't feel like we're an industrial use. We don't manufacture anything, we don't build anything or produce anything. We feel like we're a service business. We're there to serve the businesses in the area and the residences. If they want to come and bring their scrap material to us, we gladly take it, we sort it, and we ship it out. We don't do any processing of any of the metals or anything like that. And we're also feel like we're defined to the local community. It's not like someone from Peoria or Chandler is going to drive over here and bring their scrap metals. We're focused on just the community around us. And so, we feel we're in the perfect place. We have access to the main street, and all of the neighbors, the businesses alike, have access to us. As was mentioned, we're in the C3 zoning, requires a use permit. I'm sure there's, well, I know that there's precedents for this sort of thing. I myself, about four years ago, was involved in another use permit for a company called Alms Recycling. And for the record, it was case ZA 2017115. This business, very, very similar to Junior's Recycling. It was an existing facility, they were on a main thoroughfare, in this case, it was Arizona Avenue, and they had residential literally on three sides of them to deal with. Eventually, we went through the process, I represented them, and we were granted a 10-year use permit at that location. It got us to thinking, what's the difference between Alms Recycling, which got a use permit, and Junior's, which were here today to talk about getting a use permit? And the owner, Eduardo and myself, we took a long, hard look at each one of the letters that was in opposition. We appreciate their efforts, and it's important to us to understand what their concerns were. Noise, potential litter, a visual of having, I don't even like to call it a recycling center, because we don't recycle, we just collect. So, we looked at these issues that came up in the letter, and we like to propose three different propositions that we help, we think will, if not mitigate, alleviate, remove some of the concerns that the residents have. Our first proposal is, we're going to build an eight-foot-tall masonry wall all the way around the property. This will create a visual barrier, it will help with sound, it'll help keep any trash or debris from getting off the property. Secondly, we want to, how would you put it? We want to structure our hours of operations so that it's very clear to the neighborhood when we are going to be operating. Right now, it's between 7:00 and 5:00, but those hours shift depending on if it's in the summer or in the winter. Sometimes they start at 6:00, sometimes they stop at 4:00. We would like to propose a 7:00 to 5:00 hours of operation. 7:00 seems to work pretty good for any residents who want to drop off scrap metals on their way to work. 5:00 o'clock seems to work fine because the businesses in the area, they're done for the day. And then third, and in my mind, this is the biggest one, right now, there's a piece of equipment called an excavator. It's very large, ugly, and very noisy. What they use it for is to pick up large pieces of metals and put them on a trailer. They use it every day, or at least when it's required, when they need to do it, most days. We are proposing to do away with that excavator. We will not accept any materials that can't be handled either by hand or by a forklift. And we feel that this, as I said earlier, is a big one. This will get rid of a lot of noise, it'll get rid of the unsightly, even an eight-foot wall wouldn't contain it. So those are the three proposals we would like to offer to help mitigate some of the concerns that the neighbors have. In summary, we feel we're in the right place, right here, off of Main Street, close to the community that we're serving. Two, there's a precedence for a use permit for a recycling center in a C3 zoning. And three, the proposals I just outlined to help mitigate and hopefully eliminate the concerns of some of the neighbors. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Who's speaking?
Commissioner Swart.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Sir, I just want to ask you, you said in your statement that you're not a recycling center, but you guys named it Junior's Recycling Center. That's my first question. Secondly, you did a comparison to another place, which it appears that they followed the rules and the code of the Maricopa County Planning Commission. You've been operating, as it appears, for four years illegally, so those are the two things I'd like you to respond to. Thank you.
All right. Yes, it seems to be a standard in the industry to be called recycling. Obviously, if people bring their scrap materials to the center, they're doing it to get them But we don't actually physically recycle the materials there. Your second question, almost recycling that we got the use permit for about four years ago, they were an existing operation. They did have a, what do you call it, a penalty that was imposed on them that required them to go through this process. So, in a lot of ways, there's a lot of similarities. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Swart, commissioners, quickly, the example that he gave of Alms Recycling in the ZA case number, this is City of Mesa tracking number, so that was a project processed through another jurisdiction. He also gave an example of a nearby facility. I'm not familiar, but I'm not familiar with any industrial zoning. That likely was land use without proper zoning entitlement. And we only prosecute code enforcement reactively based on citizen complaints and actively out there controlling. We don't get a complaint for not pursuing code enforcement. City of Mesa use permit process is an administrative procedure. Here in unincorporated county, a special use permit is a legislative process like a zoning case, a rezoning, that goes through the commission for regulations of board supervisors. I do agree to operate a recycling facility in C3 zoning would require a legislative approval of a special use permit in unincorporated county.
And that's where we're going today.
Yes, Chairman, that's why we're here today. And also, if I may quickly, I believe Martin indicated this was at the northeast corner of 85th and Apache Trail. It's at the north.
If I may respond?
Yes, please.
I was the representative for Alms Recycling four years ago, and I know for a fact that I went through the county planning department. First, we were going to do a rezoning, but staff came back to us and said, no, it would be better to do a use permit. Maybe I got the number wrong, but I know for a fact that we, because you were at the other, the planning and zoning was at the other building off of, what, 44th or wherever it was, and I had numerous meetings with my planner there. It was not the City of Mesa use permit.
The tracking number provided by City Mesa, again, if you process it through the county, that had a recycling facility in C3 would require a special use permit. It's a legislative approval through the planning and management commission, the board supervisor.
And I think this is located in Chandler, not Mesa. So I'm not sure where you're getting the Mesa number from. Might be my mistake, I may have written down the zoning case wrong.
Chairman Schlosser.
But it's still valid.
I don't want to go down a rabbit hole on that, because this case is before us and it has to do with this particular property. So, with your, I would just like to reserve my questions to the applicant after we hear any opposition. I felt his presentation was really done well, and I just have some questions after.
Mr. Chairman, Martin just told me that the gentleman indicated the other facility was on Air France Avenue. I am familiar with that project. It's down by the county line near Arizona Avenue, it's a long railroad. Now, it's in an area that has industrial zoning. I'm familiar with that site. That was a special use permit, C3 zoning.
I do have a question of staff. He had mentioned three or four things that they would concede you. Is staff aware of those? The eight-foot wall, the hours? Okay.
Yes, sir, we took notes.
But those are new to you before you, because staff's, for the records, are not opposition, correct?
On condition G, that was actually eight-foot, on condition G was to have a site enclosed by an eight-foot tall facery wall, except for on the northwest corner where there's an existing structure which would act as a block. His proposal would actually make this wall go around the entire property.
Block wall?
Block wall, right.
Block wall. Oh, yes, sir, masonry wall.
And then the other condition was condition E, and we had it at really different hours. In E, we have that at between 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM. With this change, we'd be going down to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, which actually might be eliminate noise after hours and customers coming inside. Now, the new one would be the removing the excavator from the site, because that was not a condition at all, but yeah, if we do want to entertain and have that.
All right, anybody else from the commission at the moment? All right, I have some cards from the public. I'll let the applicant rebut after, if you wish to, after the folks speak, either in opposition or in support.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, the first card I have from the public is Kathy Dreyfort. Do you wish to speak?
Morning.
Morning. I'm letting you go first, because I was advised that you've put a lot of work into this.
Hours and hours and hours. And I guess I have a question for the commission. Were you able to get the flash drive that I had provided to Martin?
Yeah, we've got it all up there.
Well, it was a flash drive that had like 200 files on it for you to review, but, oh, that's, those were a couple things from the 200 that I had provided.
First of all, first of all, is, can you please state your name?
Sorry. Okay, so my name is Kathy Dreyfort, and I'll just go ahead with my HBL.
Yes, we have several other cases, but I know you've been hours and hours on this, but if I can limit you to like five minutes or so?
I tied myself at about eight.
Do your best to.
Okay, all right. Anyway, my name is Kathy Dreyfort, and I represent a group known as Save Twin Knolls Advocacy Group. We established in 2019 to save our neighborhood from aggregate mining that was planned in the middle of our neighborhood. Thankfully, our Twin Knolls mountain formation still remains due to community effort to protect our home's health and well-being. I am here today to go over reasons why this special use permit should be denied to, again, protect our home's health and well-being. We take no joy in opposing this SUP, but after finding that this business was not legal for years, in addition to it causing much displeasure and constant disruption to the lives of those that live nearby, and basically having no concern for rules, regulations, ordinances, or our well-being, we have no choice. I did provide a flash drive with over 200 files on it, mostly videos and photos with evidence to support all the claims that I had made, that the group made, that was stated in our final protest that we submitted to Martin on October 11th, 2023. For those who challenge our concerns, our concerns are supported by photo and video evidence. Please know that this evidence is a mere drop in the bucket of what we could have presented. Industry does not belong here. We are not just spouting our concerns because we are disgruntled, as someone put it, but we have done our homework on what the rules are, what the violations are, and why this location is not in the best interest of our neighborhood. As noted in the opposition letters, there are numerous concerns about the administrative action taken or not taken by this business, such as not completing action for over a year when under agreement with the county, and only when legal action was imminent did they begin to move forward. Another example is the required notification and visibility rules of public postings. Those were not adhered to. There are other issues noted in our opposition letter that are supported by photos in the photo, in the folder that's on the flash drive entitled "Right-of-Way Trespass Notice Failure." We have concerns about noise and violations of county ordinance P23. There was a submission to MCSO detailing the 13 recyclers and scrap yards in the surrounding area, where they are, posted hours, and when any heavy equipment is run, if they have it. Only four had an excavator and none runs outside of posted hours, but this business does. There are 52 videos on the flash drive in the folder called "Excavator," with them running at all hours, to include before 6:00 AM. Imagine waking to this each day at 6:00 AM, trying to have visitors for a cookout in your yard, or even having to be concerned about things falling off the wall due to vibration when heavy metal is dropped or crushed by the excavator. Details are in the email sent to MCSO and was submitted to planning and development and should be in the package that is on this particular issue. We have concerns about the safety of our community. In discussions with rural metro, we battled, who battled the fire directly behind the business on June 27th, 2023, there was acknowledgement that a worker was using a torch who could have caused the fire. Interestingly, Andy Litten, who was the prior ombudsman, he was there to see that fire. We have concerns about sparks being released from the 18-foot boom cat excavator that runs most of the day. We have a folder called "Fire," which has information in it. We have quotes from a cat expert about sparks. On our more in-depth discussion on our protest, one stray ember could be devastating to our community. We are concerned about increased crime with this business being a draw for such activity. There are protest letters that were submitted to planning and development for those who have experienced the crime. We have concerns about increased traffic in the area, as well as on 85th Place, the unmaintained county road where the business sits. Unmaintained means there is no dust abatement, bringing to light the concern about air quality and pollution. This area is already designated as a severe non-attainment air quality area. We have concerns there is a tire business that's been working out of this location, but there doesn't seem to be any mention or photos of the tire shop on the SUP application. We question how this business could possibly provide the required parking spaces, as noted on the plan map, when the tire business takes up about half the space at the front of the building. In that same folder on this flash drive, we have evidence regarding our concerns about vehicles parting, parking on the A dot right-of-way on Main Street on a regular basis. In communication with Maricopa Planning and Development, they have been trying to obtain A dot feedback, but they have not heard anything, at least they didn't advise me. Based on maps and county records, much of the activity at the front of the business is on this right-of-way. There is also parking on the property directly to the west that belongs to Twin Knolls Two Land LLC, indicating likely trespassing, as well as another indicator that this business does not have space to operate within county restrictions and requirements. As previously stated, there are 13 other recyclers and scrap yards within an approximate 15-mile radius and are available to the community for their needs. I visited each one a couple weeks ago, and all, of course, have proper permitting, and if the owners knew, they stated to me that they were situated in an industrial zone. And by visual inspection, none, not one, were surrounded by nearby homes. Supporting a business that is handy for some is just that, handy, but that does not make it appropriate for this location. There are other options, and hopefully this, there is an industrial zone property to which this business can relocate. This is a C3 zoning with surrounding residences for a reason. It was not meant for heavy industrial business, and any approval of an SUP for industrial will send, will set an unwanted precedent for other industry to move in. Any approval of this SUP will be devastating to those who are in the immediate area, not only for their everyday lives, but their home values will plummet. We invite anyone who wants this SUP to be approved to stop by our homes and see how much you enjoy the noise, dust, increased traffic, and crime. to stop by our homes and see how much you enjoy the noise, dust, increased traffic, and crime. I could continue, but our ten-page detailed protest, the flash drive, the letter to MCSO, along with other letters from individuals in the immediate area detailing the horror that this business has brought is very detailed and should provide clear, a clear picture to the decision-makers. We have taken hours of our time to ensure that the commission and board of supervisors have sufficient and accurate information, supported by evidence, in order to make the appropriate decision on this SUP. The Save Twin Knolls Advocacy Group supports the recommendation of the county staff for denial of this special use permit. Thank you.
A couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
In your statement, you had mentioned the excavator.
Yes.
And also the hours of operation.
Yes.
And the applicant brought up that they would not use an excavator, and they were changing their hours of operation to seven to five instead of whatever steps at eight to nine PM. Does that change any level of your opposition by their conceding that? And also the eight-foot block wall?
The eight-foot block wall, there are so many other concerns with the, with the traffic, with the crime, uh, with the air quality, with pollution. All those are an issue as well. It just doesn't have to do with the excavator noise. That has been a huge one, but there are a lot of other issues at, at hand.
Thank you. Anybody else from the commission have questions, Ms. Dryford? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the next card I have in opposition is Glenn Odegaard. I can't read your writing. Since I gave her so much time because of all the work she put in, if you could not repeat anything that she said, I would appreciate it. Sort of limited to about two minutes, if you don't mind.
You got it, no problem. My name is Glenn Odegaard. I like to voice my opposition to the potential issuance of a special use permit to allow Junior's Recycling to continue operating as an industrial operation. I've been a licensed general contractor since in the area since nineteen eighty-five. I'm typically pro-business and pro-construction. My five-acre property is the west peak of Twin Knolls, West Oak Junior's Recycling, uh, with Apache Trail frontage. I have previously received both C, both PNC and BOS approval in twenty twenty-one to resume my project from C three to C three, CUPD. Junior's location truly functions a functional industrial yard. It should not receive any special use permit as detrimental to the adjoining area. The recycling yard is currently zoned C three, literally only thirty feet away from R three zoning, of which there are many single-family homes. Typically, the transition from industrial to residential zoning incrementally graduates by having the most dense industrial, then commercial, then multifamily, then residential housing. Other industrial to residential progression shifts are accomplished by having open natural spacing, larger setbacks, masonry block walls, or a combination of other zoning buffers. Those areas were specifically created to protect individual homeowners that are directly abutting industrial zoning locations. These buffers are intended to protect the single-family houses from noise and traffic, which disrupts their neighborhood tranquility. It is too late to create buffers, transitional zoning, larger setbacks, or other remedies that are prevalent in modern-day zoning districts to isolate this recycling industry plant from residential area. However, it is not too late. The planning and zoning officials do not allow expansion of a non-conforming heavy industrial use that is detrimental to the adjoining neighborhood. We urge you now to allow the industrial SUP use in a district that borders a single-family R three zoning neighborhood, which is just thirty feet away. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next card I have in opposition, Scott Sweetser, Sweetser. Welcome, sir, please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Scott Sweetser, and I live two streets away from this illegally-run business. Uh, from my front door, straight as a bird, I'm twelve hundred and fifty feet away. For over two years, since I've been living there, I've remodeled the house, done an addition. When this noise first came into effect, I reached out to Charles Hart, who knows me very well, because I'm a contractor and also a home investor in the area. Since I moved from North Scottsdale, I've flipped over twenty houses in that immediate area. The noise is ridiculous. The tweakers, as we call them, are all through the neighborhoods, stealing stuff, bringing them over to this place with shopping carts, and so be it. Uh, it's an eyesore. Uh, they say they run a legal business. I've taken three refrigerators there, okay, full of Freon, and watched them smash them straight in front of me. So they do whatever they want over there, and as far as hours, they don't follow hours. If they say they're going to set their hours from eight to five, they're there at six in the morning or nine o'clock at night crushing metal or cutting metal at ten o'clock at night in the summertime. So this business does not belong in the neighborhood whatsoever. And there's neighbors that live the next street behind me that their houses are fifteen hundred feet away as a bird flies. And they, I had messages, and they've also signed a petition. So I appreciate that this does not go through. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Uh, one last card in opposition, Michael Milligan.
Good morning, please state your name for the record. Michael Milligan, retired SRP lineman, four years now. I've lived here seventeen years, and I did not move into an industrial area, and now I live in one. It's been an emotional deal for me because it's not day-to-day, it's not week-to-week, it's not month-to-month, it's been years. If there'd have been a supervisor living there or one of you guys, I think it should have been a chain on the door in forty-eight hours. I've seen post junior, when I could listen to the birds and, and sit outside and drink tea and, and read, read a book. Not anymore. I'm trying to determine whether a truck with a trailer loaded with scrap metal is louder going in loaded, or when they come back empty, bouncing down the eighty-fifth place that they come down. Then you have the, uh, continual parade of shopping carts being pushed, scrappers, indigents, homeless people who push the metal down there, and then they come back without the shopping cart. And I've seen as much as fifteen, twenty shopping carts at the west, uh, east, east entrance. And then they disappear. Well, what happened? Oh, Junior calls all the owners and come get your carts? Or does he disassemble them and throw them into the pile? This burned-out RV, it was set fire at Hawes and Billings. And a man and a woman came by and said, oh, let's drag it a mile and a half over to Junior's and get some scrap for it. I saw it go by the house. Fifteen minutes later, comes by, that's in front of my house. Disconnects it, and I said, you're not leaving that here. He runs around, lowers his tailgate to obscure his tag, and takes off. I get a photo of him, I get his license plate number, and I have him hooked up to that RV, and MCSO does nothing, and Maricopa County tells me it's an unmaintained road, it's not our problem. To west of Junior, uh, there's a tree line that's on Ordle's land, Ken Ordle's. There was at least thirty to forty homeless people encamped in there for a while. It's a cause of a draw of a money source that they can come to the scrapyard and get a few dollars. Uh, a year ago, I had three batteries, car batteries, in my backyard, if you can imagine, and they were taken. You're in your house asleep, and someone's prowling around in your backyard looking for material to sell to Junior's. And then a month ago, I had a hundred feet of half-inch, uh, CMT electrical conduit stolen. Uh, that was a seventy-five-dollar loss on my part. I'm sure it was like, you know, a five, ten-dollar deal sold like that. I, I don't understand how this has been allowed to run continually for nearly four years now. It's, uh, I can throw a baseball, well, maybe not today, but to, to the excavator from, from my property line. And, and it's just that close, and I have company over, they hear it, what's going on? I have, uh, uh, block layers over, and they see it, and they said, man, is that every day? And I says, yeah, welcome to my, my world now. My quality of life is crap. My retirement years are not what I had hoped they would be. And I'm asking you today to decline this so the rest of what time I have left will be what I thought it would be. And, uh, I could go on, on and on about, uh, I'm sorry. So the shopping carts, you know, and, and then one day, a guy came down the road, and he's pulling a two-wheel dolly, and he's carrying a bandbox. I don't know if you know what that is, a band on the road, and they have these really nice construction boxes that are black with chrome accents, the things like five, six-hundred-dollar box, and he's carrying it to Junior's to get five, six dollars. Where did he get it? We've had a chain-link fence on the adjacent property directly behind me. It'd been up for like seventy years. All of a sudden, it's starting to get cut because there are tweakers, and the people are cutting through to go to Junior's or, or, uh, I found out, and I couldn't believe it, they were like three hundred feet away. There was an empty office complex behind me, and they were living inside, these meth addicts. And it's just a draw to the wrong people, uh, the traffic and the dust. Um, I'm sorry, everything Kathy said and, and plus more, so. Please help me understand how this could continue. And I'm all, all I'm asking is, is to follow the law, C three. Commercial, he's already indicated he's industrial. He, he processes airplanes, he processes cars, trucks, um, SUVs, campers, motorhomes. Uh, oh, I'm, I'm almost forgot. He has on his property, he has no place to operate within his boundaries. Like if it was here, then he parks out here on the A dot, or he parks over here on Ken Ordle. He opens his doors up, and he pulls the, uh, roll-off out here, and his employees park over here on Ordle. If you step six feet out his front door where that sign is, says Junior Cycling, you're in the right-of-way. So I understand if you have a business, you have to be able to, not only employee parking, your equipment parking, and your customer parking. And he has none of that to operate, none. Um, he was supposed to post two signs for notification. He did one at the base of the Junior's, you see it there? And it's covered up usually by cars or, or, uh, uh, dumpsters, and then he put another one on August fifteenth on the corner of eighty-fifth place and Main, but it said posted May fifth. Well, no, it was set in the ground at August nineteenth, because I saw it. And this operating, I've been in bed at night, and I'll, I'll hear just faintly a chop saw at two in the morning. I'll get up, I'll walk down there, and I've shot video of him chopping metal up at two in the morning. And it's summertime, and it's hot, and they, you know, want to work when it's cooler. Uh, my alarm clock, I don't need. This excavator is my alarm clock, six-thirty, seven o'clock, whatever. And I can see, I can stand in my front door and look to the northwest and see the excavator picking up scrap metal, dropping it into empty bins, and it alternates all day long. The favorite day is Aluminum Can Day, where he takes the smaller bins full of aluminum cans and pours them into a bigger bin, and it sounds like metal mice rushing into a, a, a metal tunnel. You just can't imagine the stress that I've, I've endured, and, uh, I'm emotional about this and I apologize. Just give me back my, my, uh, my peace and quiet and a reasonable traffic flow, and hopefully, when this is dissolved, the, uh, criminal element, the meth heads, the homeless and the indigents will, because Twin Knolls, five years ago, to hike and to walk around was a beautiful place. Now, when you go over there, it's like the Chief Ironside, when you had the tier of America being littered. It, it's a travesty, and we have, uh, grown footage of before and after Junior, what that mountain now looks like. And then I want to clarify, it's my belief, I, I'm not a fire marshal, but I, I studied, an exhaust builds up carbon, and it's got like a six-inch exhaust pipe that goes straight up and out. It builds up carbon, and that carbon superheats and then breaks away, and that's what I think what started the fire that we had. And had the wind been a little stronger that day, I fear what would happen. And now I have to look across at my beautiful knolls and see the burn scar across the top. And even the limited rain we've had since then has also been a drainage change because the rain, you know, without the foliage stopping it, is coming off and into the street, causing even more flooding problems, like, like it, like it will. So, I, I wish, I wish you well, and, and please dissolve this, uh, given me the time for this. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this case? That's here in the auditorium. Several others? You didn't fill out a speaker card? Okay. You could fill one out, and then David, is there anyone on webinar wishing to speak?
I have Andrea Wallenberg, who wishes to speak in support. Andrea needs to unmute on her side, and then she should be able to speak. There you go. You should be able to go ahead now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
My name is Andrea Wallenberg.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm a local small-business area owner in Mesa. I just wanted to counter a few of the statements that I've heard in opposition to this, um, business here. One of, one of the, I'm sorry, give me a sec, I'm, I'm just looking at my notes here. So my first question would be, is if Junior's Recycling is asked to vacate this area, what business do you think would end up in its place? Is it going to be a flower shop? Highly unlikely. Okay, so whatever does take the place, is there going to be less traffic? I, I don't think the traffic here is anything outrageous or anything that's incomparable to any of the other businesses that are currently located along Main Street. As far as the crime and, and the multiple statements of tweakers in the area? Has anybody been down to Fries? You know, what is it, five miles away from this location? So I don't think it's this business in particular that's bringing in any of that, um, that sort of, what, what would you say, any of that sort of population? It has nothing to do with this business. It's just an, unfortunately, an unfortunate fact of this, this part of town in general. Junior's Recycling actually offered to provide dumpsters in the recent past when, uh, the issue of the homeless encampments in the vicinity were brought up and were addressed. He offered to help clean that up and to do his part to eliminate those sorts of issues in this area. As far as things like the burnt-out trailer, I, I don't know how you can hold the business owner responsible for random items that people drag in to try and get his business to take. I mean, it's no different than the whole catalytic converter crime spree issue that is going, you know, was going on around Phoenix area for how long? Um, you know, it's, it's not his, he's not asking people to bring trailers, you know, to his property, and when they do, if they get started on fire, you know, he's, that's, that's not him, that's not this business. You, you can't control what members of the public are doing otherwise in, in response to it. As far as outside litter around the business, uh, I, I've been to this business on multiple occasions. I have never seen anything outside the walls, anything in the streets. In all honesty, there's more trash blowing down the road in front of my own home than there is in the area of this property. So I, I, I just think a lot of the arguments that have been given to oppose this permit are, are fairly baseless, and and I think that there's probably more benefit to this business staying in place than there is, than problems, I, I, sorry. I'm trying to conclude, I don't know how to conclude, I just, I just, I, I'm in support of it. I think the business should be staying in place, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. David, is there anybody else wishing to speak, either in opposition or support on webinar?
There are no other speakers.
Okay. Just one more card. Thank you, if you could please. Thank you. If you could please limit it to a couple of minutes. All right. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Ian, Ian Wallenberg, owner of ICAN Access. Just wanted to say that I actually do the surveillance for, for juniors recycling. They have over 20 cameras on site and, uh, on multiple look, uh, occasions. I have, uh, pulled video for them, presented it to Maricopa County sheriffs. And as well as, as, uh, junior has in any issues where there has been anything reported stolen. So all the, all that stuff is, is tracked. Keep track of all the identification as well and always work with the police anytime they're needed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, and for the record, you're in support, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, anybody else from the public? One more?
The lady that just spoke, that there's no trash or anything.
Sir.
Come up here real quick with my cell phone. She doesn't live in the neighborhood. Let me just show you folks real quick, the RVs that are all abandoned, that are dropped off and come to this business.
That's fine. We.
Well, but she doesn't live in the neighborhood. We do.
Yeah, I understand.
See it day in and day out and it's disgusting.
We understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if that gentleman could provide that photo to, that should be part of the record.
Yeah, if he could please do that. So, all right, we need to keep moving along, but if you could please provide that photo in your name. Hang on.
The latest standout that you received is loaded.
It was on there. Okay. So we already have it for the record. Would the applicant like to rebut just real quickly, please?
Mr. Chairman. Wow. I have, I have no desire to disparage the neighborhood or any of the residents. But I think it's a little disingenuous, or that's probably not the right word, but to, to heap on a, a single business where there's a commercial business all up and down, uh, the Apache trails, but intend to heap onto them. All of the woes of, of the neighborhood, I don't think is fair. I, I think the three proposals that, uh, that I had, you know, talked about will eliminate, uh, most if not all, you know, people aren't going to bring motor homes. They're not going to bring, um, automobiles. They're, they're not going to bring this stuff because it's not going to be, it's not going to be accepted. The, the eight foot wall is going to go a long way to, um, keeping whatever debris inside the space. It's a visual barrier. And again, I'm reiterating things, but I think it's important. You know, it is just not, it's not just a business. There are, um, half a dozen employees that work there, um, that will be affected by just the, if, if, if this is designed, denied and we have to, we have to vacate. So it's, um, and again, we don't feel like we're an industrial business. Well, we're a service business. And again, I'm reiterating what I wanted to say, but I think it's important. We provide a service to the immediate neighborhood. You know, hopefully everybody would want to recycle and come and use this facility, but that's neither here or there. So, um, there, there was talk about, uh, traffic. Well, um, a collection center has been in that area for 12 years. So, uh, I, there, there's no additional traffic. I mean, it's a, what is it? A six lane road, two and three in each direction with a large median, um, not an issue. Our employees park in the back. Customers actually pull into the back. Their stuff is weighed and then they circle around. They come in, they get their money and they leave. It's, it's a constant flow of traffic. We don't need dozens of parking spaces in the front. And yes, the parking is in the right of way. It's kind of, oh, oh, here's the building. It's an existing building and this is what we have to deal with. Again, I don't, it, it's hard to, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to say, but we don't want to discriminate. We don't care how you come in. You can come in in a car, you can come in in a truck, you can walk in. If you've got some, uh, materials that you want to get recycled and, and get some money for, we accept it. Um, and again, as I mentioned earlier, again, without this excavator, we're not going to accept any of this large, large stuff. And, and most of the noise and, and, and those sort of issues go away. Guess that's all I have. There were any other questions?
Any questions of the commission?
Yeah, Chairman Sosser. Yeah, I, I do believe that some of the changes, the operation changes substantially. Just listening to the residents, uh, three main concerns that stuck out to me, air quality, parking, is it possible for you to stay out of right of ways and park all of your op, you know, all of your operations within the property that you have? And do you believe your operation is a catalyst for criminal activity in the neighborhood? So those are my three questions I'd like you to hit on just a little bit.
First one again?
Air quality. Are you doing things which is, you know, harming the neighborhood, uh, with air, dust, all those types of things? And I know we have our own people, but these are the concerns that, that, that monitor that stuff as well. But those are concerns that brought by the, by the, uh, by the people here. Parking, can you keep, can you stay off of the streets and right of ways? I mean, I'm seeing pictures where there's pictures of cars off the property. So can you do that under an SUP where you can control that? And then are you a catalyst for criminal activity?
All right. The, the, taking the first one, again, this excavator, um, it's the one that would be belching, you know, smoke, things like that. Again, doing away with that, um, we don't have any other effect on air quality that, that I'm aware of. We're just aluminum cans, small pieces of metal. Again, all we do is sort them, put them on a truck or trailer and ship them out. A lot of this stuff is, is there less than 24, 48 hours. Parking? We're doing what a lot of the businesses along the Apache trail are doing. Especially on the north side, uh, the, the, almost all of them have their customer parking in the right of way. It, it just, it just seems to, um, that's the way it was, it was, it was developed over, over the long period of time. Can we move customer parking to the back? Probably if, if, if that was the deal breaker, we probably could. Um, and then, and do something to, to block off, um, in front of the building. Obviously we still need to have a way to pull in and a way to pull out. Put the space in between, potentially we could probably do something like that. And, and the third one, crime, again, we welcome everybody that wants to, to, to recycle the materials they bring in. You know, it, it's, I don't know how you can, you can judge, uh, a, a collection center for, for all the potential of crime or, or, or the homeless, um, um, you know, staying in a, in a building, an abandoned building. It, to me, it's just, I, I, I'm not sure how I can defend something like that. That's, it's, it's, I don't know how you would have put that as a burden on this, on this business.
Yeah, Chairman Sosser, and I was asking for a very subjective opinion of that from him because those were allegations made that you were, and I just wanted to hear your thoughts on it. So I appreciate that. This is something that is special use and so we have to consider that. So thank you for answering.
Are you familiar with this area here?
Not, I'm not. I pulled aerials and looked at it, so no.
Anybody else from the commission have a question of the applicant? Nobody else on webinar, David?
There's no one else on the webinar.
Okay, nobody else on webinar?
So I have one question. Thank you. If you build this wall around it, are you going to have to put like a gate that would be open and closed during your business hours?
Yeah. So there are gates now.
Okay.
Both, uh, going in and coming out, there is a, a set of gates. I don't think they're opaque. I think you can see through them. So one of the conditions, and I think it may be actually be, um, a stipulate or, or in the, uh, the packet that we worked with, with planning board was to, to make that, those gates opaque. So, um, we're, we're not doing business hours, they're closed.
They're, they're locked and closed.
They're locked and closed. Yes, ma'am.
And then besides the excavator, what else could be making noise? I know a chop saw was mentioned.
Yeah, there are some hand, um, tools, um, that they use. Um, and it'd be the first two, you know, if we, if they're being used after hours, that's, that has to be cleaned up. We, we fully, fully appreciate the concerns of the, the, the neighbors on that. We shouldn't be working at 2:00 AM and that's, that's something that should be, that should be addressed. You know, regardless of what the use is there, uh, there, there shouldn't be things like that happening. And we fully understand that and, and appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Any other question of the commission? I do have one. And I know you don't have an SUP, the, the other zoning, but refresh my memory. How long have you been in operation there with what you've been doing?
At this particular location?
Yeah.
About four years.
Four years.
Prior to that, um, they started late in 2011, uh, when, when, um, the owner purchased the extreme recycling facility that was really less than 100 yards away from, from where we are now. So it's been a, a span of about 11, 12 years where we've had a collection, um, center, um, right there at that location.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
With that, I'm going to close the public forum. I do have a question of staff. I know Darren mentioned that you act in defense and not offense of county. What? Okay. Whatever it is, not my neck of the woods, two questions. Um, not my district. When was the complaint or whatever you call it, when was that submitted to the county?
Received about, uh, almost three years.
Three years ago, okay. And then are any of you, not to put anybody on the spot, but again, I live on the opposite side of the world here. But, uh, just sort of the flavor of the, the area as far as the residential mix with the industrial slash commercial mix. Is there a way to sort of summarize that for everybody?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm familiar with the area in general. There is a very eclectic mix of housing types and, uh, commercial types. There is not industrial uses in the area.
Particularly this, this use.
Chairman Sosser, is that, um, tray, is the trailer sales place still across the street? Okay. You have a fairly large one, a lot of trailers out. It's mixed, you know, as you look at it. I've driven by it a couple of times. I just don't know that area really.
No, sir. I've already closed the public forum. So we're just talking amongst ourselves now. Any further discussion? I have a few comments, but from the commission, Mr. Limlaw. Did you have anything else?
Go ahead. I may.
What I, that's why I asked about the flavor for the area. I've been doing this much longer than I ever hoped or thought I would, like 23 years. I'm probably getting soft for my old age and I've heard every single argument, both in favor and in opposition of hundreds and hundreds of cases. And in this particular case, we've heard, I hate to say this, but the same arguments over and over again. And this group of opposition has been more compelling as far as why not to have this case than almost any case that I've, I've ever heard. So I guess I'm just one vote, but in good, in good conscience, I can't vote for, uh, listed for this SUP.
All right. With, with that, Chairman, I'd like to make some comments. First, a question to staff. If we deny this SUP, what is the shutdown process for? Is it immediate cease and desist? Is it like, I'm, I'm just making our attorney really nervous right now, but.
If you take, after you're actually saying this, we're proceeding, November 15th or some, or final decision. We, uh, if I may quickly. We have a judgment against this property and accruing fines. Those continue to accrue, uh, uh, there's daily non-compliance penalties that are accruing against this property. Civil property is brought into compliance, either through cease and desist or obtaining the, uh, proper entitlement permitting. However, uh, that just is when the fines halt. So those, uh, the, the, and I'm sorry, I keep saying fines, but it's a non-compliance penalty. And those, uh, those penalties are an incentive to make timely compliance. Sometimes, sometimes they were not as much of an incentive, but we will immediately record against this property. And then, uh, that would be the administrative extent of our code enforcement authority. But based upon, uh, neighborhood concerns, we could ask the, um, board supervisors for direction on how to proceed if we want to secretly report.
Mr. Peck.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just so you understand, we don't actually have a judgment. What we have is an order from the hearing officer, which starts the civil penalties running. That is not an enforceable judgment. When Darren makes reference to recording, all we can do is record a notice that the hearing officer has found the property to be in violation. If we want to turn it into what you as a business person would think of as a judgment, we would have to go to court. We have no ability to shut down a business. We do have the legal right to go to court to ask for an order that the business be shut down, which can then be enforced by the sheriff. But if this were denied, the business doesn't stop until there's further action taken. So you know that residents who are specially impacted by this business also have the right to go to court to shut it down. By statute, if you prove a zoning violation, that is by operation of statute, a public nuisance. And the statute gives property owners the right to go to court to seek to shut it down. Needless to say, we have hundreds, maybe thousands of improper operations in the county. So the county just doesn't have the resources to take every one of those to court. But to directly answer your question, we at this point would have no mechanism to shut them down.
All right. Thank, thank you. Sorry to go down that. I just was curious. I, I will echo your thoughts of, you know, I, I don't know how many years I've been on this, but we hear a lot of, of these. And, um, I, I do appreciate the applicants coming in and sharing their thoughts of how to remedy. I appreciate the, those that live nearby coming. It's our job to try to determine if this is a use that doesn't change the nature of the community. And, you know, the zoning is appropriate. I'm with Chairman on this. I probably was leaning towards that those stipulations were enough to, um, satisfy my thoughts that this would, um, be okay. But, um, I'm leaning differently after listening to the applicants and, uh, some of the parking issues and just in general, some of the, the uses of that, of that type. So that's kind of where my head is right now, but I appreciate both everyone for coming in. It helps us to make the right decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Squirt?
Yeah, I would like to also echo that I a hundred percent agree with both of you so far. I like to look at facts and evidence because that's what really tells the story. Um, I think these, uh, individuals who showed up today, uh, you could tell by the emotion in their voices and their testimony. To provide the amount of evidence that Kathy and her group provided with photographs and very clear and precise testimony, I, I believe these neighbors and I'm adamantly opposed to approving this case. And like you mentioned, you know, we get to see a lot of cases and to me, this is just a, a, a really egregious violation. The reason we have rules and laws is because we have to have them. And in this particular case, they've operated for over four years. And, uh, I'm adamantly opposed to this being approved and I agree with staff. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Squirt. Anybody else from the commission?
Chair, Chairman, I have just one more thought. In light of comments made by staff and our attorney and listening to the residents, my thought is I am a no. And, um, but I am also a, how do we make this good for everyone? Residents and operator, uh, moving forward. And, um, maybe that's a thought, uh, that we consider is. Residents and operator, uh, moving forward and, um, maybe that's a thought, uh, that we consider is even a temporary six month special use permit. Is that just very weird and out of the normal? Um, but with stipulations of operation that allow them to leave and we, uh, that we recommend to the, to the board. But I mean, ultimately it's the board's decision, correct? We're just making a recommendation today of what we think is appropriate. Um, but that is where my head is, is that if we just deny today, it goes to them. It operates however it operates. The residents, you know, don't have any protections. They didn't agree to anything on violations. But maybe I'm just complicating things, but that's where my head is a little bit, so.
Question of staff, if we do deny this, and I don't know that we will or we won't, but where does it go from there?
It goes to the November 15th.
So it still goes there whether we deny it or not? And for the record, I am the most for the, to the applicant, I'm the most pro property rights person in the world. But that's why I asked a specific question of staff about the flavor of the area. Of, of whether or not this is proper use for that particular area. And from everything I've heard, it's not, so.
And Chairman, just, uh, maybe a denial is just the easiest, cleanest, and that is something that they work out with each other and try to present that to the, to the, um, the county, um, at, on that November event is something that works well for the residents and works well for the business owner to leave where they are running under some seven to five hours, no heavy crazy machinery. And it's like a six month period, but it would be a win for everybody. So that's something to consider as residents, maybe to consider that with the business owner as well. And I know you're all shaking your heads, but. All right, yeah, so.
I would like to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if someone from that district wants to make the motion, I'll stand down. If not, I'll proceed.
Commissioner Swart, go ahead.
Like to make a motion for denial of this case based on the facts that staff has provided and the testimony today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Swart. Motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Landbolt. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes, for denial.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Randall? Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Limblom?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Schlesser?
Yes, for denial.
Chairman, that's in a denial by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your input. Uh, we need to move along. We have a couple more regular agenda items, items three and four. Staff like to present, please. Maybe one. There's nothing. This is five.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We just move forward.
CPA 2023 oh oh nine and Z 2023 oh five nine, Hila Hydrogen Facility. The subject site is just under 173 acres in size and is located northwest of the junction of I-10 and Salome Highway in the general Tonopah area, about seven miles west of the western boundary of the Tonopah Arlington area plant. That's like this. The applicant is requesting a change in the land use destination from rural development area to heavy industrial, as well as a zone change with overlay from rural 43 to IND3 IEPD for the purposes of developing a hydrogen production facility on site. The requested overlay will serve several purposes. First, it will limit the use of the site to just the production of hydrogen and accessory uses necessary to support hydrogen production. Second, the applicant has requested a few deviations in zoning ordinance requirements, with the most prominent being an increase in allowed height to 150 feet. Does the increase is necessary for required equipment for the hydrogen production such as, um, pipe stacks and tanks? Additionally, the applicant is requesting a reduction in parking, loading, unloading spaces and screening. The reduction in parking is necessary due to the extreme large size of structures that will generally be unoccupied. Steph has no concern over the reduction of screening due to the remoteness of the site, as well as the ineffectiveness screening would have for some of the tall components of the use. Steph notes that one email of acquisition was received raising concerns over altering historic drainage flows. Steph also notes that an approved engineered drainage and drainage plan will be required prior to construction to ensure historic flows on and off the site are preserved. Steph recommends the commission adopt a motion for approval of CPA 2023 oh oh nine, as well as Z 2023 oh five nine, subject to conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mueller. Any questions of staff this time? From the commission? Hearing none, the applicant here to speak. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, Chair, Commission, for your record, Lindsay Shuby with the law firm of Gammage and Burnham, 40 North Central, Phoenix, Arizona, eight five zero zero four. So thank you so much for your time. Um, I think Joseph did a great job of, of explaining our project. We're here for two requests, the, the minor conference of plan amendment as well as the rezone. Um, Chair, I do have a presentation, but not necessary to make it unless you guys have specific questions.
If you could give a brief presentation.
Great.
If you don't mind.
I don't mind. Do we have the slides? Oh, perfect. It's already up. Okay. So thank you so much again.
Mainly because the hydrogen facility and I'm not sure everybody understands what that is or is not, so.
No, Chair, thank you so much.
You can keep it as brief as you like.
I, I, you've already had a long morning, so I will keep it brief. Uh, uh, next slide, please. So as I, oh, we're missing, nope, back please, sorry. Uh, there, there were names on here, but I guess technological. Uh, we are here, I'm here on behalf of Nextera. Uh, Hila Hydrogen LLC is actually a fully owned subsidiary of Nextera. It's one of the largest energy producers in the country. And we're also here with Lindy, uh, who operates 150 hydrogen plants currently. So I'm sure you read that in your narrative. We have a big group of people all back there to answer any questions you may have. So, uh, you know, I may not, as a zoning attorney, have all the answers, but, but we will answer any of them. Next slide, please. Again, this is a site that's 170, oh, we did, perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, again, the major amendment to the, to the comp plan as well as the rezone for 173 acres. Next slide, please. What's very important, Chair and, and Commission, is the location. We are located at the northeast corner of Salome Highway and 523rd Avenue. So this is a large site and we believe that, uh, we took a lot of time in terms of site selection. As these, as we look to new energy production, I think that where the location is in terms of proximity to residents and, and proximity in the county and, and other jurisdictions is very important. So we feel we are very adequately located here in terms of buffering and screening from existing residents and, and future development. Next slide, please. This is a closer look at our parcel, again, northeast corner of Salome Highway, 550, 523rd Avenue. As you can see, what's great about this is the proximity to the I-10. Um, it, it will not have much truck traffic relative to the size of the parcel and the use. Um, but, but the proximity to the I-10 and, and this, um, alternative fuel source is very important. Uh, again, and I'm sure you read in the staff report, our close, the closest neighbor is over a mile away on, on the other side of the I-10. So the, the lack of proximity next to, uh, residential development is important. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a conceptual site plan. As stated by Joseph, we are going to go through the plan of development process and produce all the proper engineering documents. Um, obviously we will not alter the floodplain. I am not an engineer, nor do I even like to play one. Um, but we will not alter any of the, the existing flows and the grading and drainage plan will have to be approved as we go through the process. Um, the, uh, deviations that we are asking for in our IU, uh, our IUPD table, again, use of hydrogen only, as Joseph explained, the height is, uh, uh, for stacks. Again, those would be, we don't know if we're going to need that entire height, but we wanted to ask for it now, um, as we're going through this process. Uh, and then again, parking deviations, again, because of the specific nature of this use, we don't have a ton of, a ton of customers or any of those things. Um, we did ask for some parking deviations. Next slide, please. So what is this, you know, and we can speak more to hydrogen, you know, Chair, if, if we've got some questions. But again, um, this is over a billion dollar investment. Um, as we look to alternative energy sources, I, I have heard, you know, and we did a presentation at the planning conference, hydrogen, um, will be a replacement of diesel. So what we're looking to in terms of hydrogen and what will happen at this plant is to turn H2O into liquid H, liquid hydrogen, that will then replace diesel in, in some, in commercial and, and trucks as we move forward. Uh, initially, there'll be 300 construction jobs and 90 permanent jobs, which as noted in the staff report, you know, may not seem, uh, as big of a deal. But in these remote areas, that, that, that's a very important employer in the area. Uh, and enough hydrogen to power 3,000 trucks and eliminate 850,000, um, metric tons of carbon. Uh, and the site, again, for 173 acres, will only see about 60 trucks per day ultimately in, in ultimate construction. Next slide, please. Just a couple, I don't know why this, uh, apologies, it is in your packet and attached to the staff report. Um, there are just some site, uh, context photos. I mean, I'm sure you could see them in your packet that there is, there's nothing out there right now. So next slide, please. Uh, perfect. Again, this is just the existing site condition. Next slide, please. One thing that's very important, Chair and, and Commission, is, is first responders, right? As we are, like I said, we do have a partner of Lin, with Lindy, who do currently operate over 100 or 150 hydrogen plants. So this is not our first rodeo. While this is a, a new technology, um, to a lot of us, it's not new to, to our team here. But most importantly, uh, we have already established a relationship with the Har, Harquahela Fire District. Uh, this is a letter of support here. Um, it's going to be very important to us that we not only have an onsite response plan, but also an offsite response plan. Uh, it, first responders and, 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 um, our relationship with them is very, very important. Uh, not only will we work with them through the plan of development process, but we will have annual, uh, training sessions, not only with our employees onsite, but also with first responders that will be responding to the site in case of emergency. We don't anticipate any emergencies, but gosh, I didn't anticipate the car wreck that I saw this morning on my way down here. Uh, next slide, please. Again, just some additional context photos. Uh, next slide, please. Yeah, in closing, Chair, you know, I think this is very exciting. This is a game changer for the county, the state, uh, and, and the nation. You know, we do have, uh, we need to identify additional fuel sources. I'm not saying that anyone is, is going to solve all the problems, but we're really excited of, of this opportunity for the state. Um, we're working with all sorts of partners like GPEC, uh, the Arizona Commerce Authority, and, and we're just really excited to bring this project. Um, the hydrogen super freeway, which is kind of what we're looking at, I think some of the original, the, the beginning parts of the hydrogen, um, journey will be having plants and kind of trucks and fueling stations going from Los Angeles all the way to Texas. So I think it's really, uh, important that Arizona is part of this journey and, and really exciting. So with that, uh, respectfully request approval, uh, from the planning commission and here with a recommendation of support from staff.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the applicant from the commission? Uh, I have a couple of comments slash questions. I know you have a letter of support from the Harquahela Fire District. Did you reach out to any other fire districts or anybody?
So, uh, Chair, we did not. There are, there, we are in their service provider area and therefore we responded. We, we're dealing with them.
And I wrote down your key question, plan of development process. If you could, during that process, because if you do have an emergency, it's not just going to be the Harquahela Valley Fire District. Contrary to the last case, this is in my backyard, even though it's that far out. But third, and I don't, that's why I asked about the, for you to do a presentation, because it's, it's a new, uh, technology, obviously. But please reach out to the Buckeye Valley Fire Department, the Buckeye Fire Department, and whoever else would potentially need to respond if there is an emergency, Salome Fire District, everybody, yeah.
Chair, you absolutely have my commitment that we will work kind of through Harquahela, because it's their district, with all the neighboring fire districts. Uh, because you're correct, if there is a major event, everyone comes in and works together.
Yeah, and I think they develop an emergency site, uh, emergency response plan, so.
Chair, correct. And we will ensure that everyone who would respond will participate and will be invited to the annual, um, training sessions onsite.
Okay. Uh, location, contrary, we've had other cases, but they're lithium ion battery facilities. Location of this is, again, I don't know how big of an emergency there could be, but the location is perfect. It's out in the middle of nowhere. You mentioned that there's one, there's one home, uh, within a mile. And your engineer said that, that's with whatever emergency within so many feet, that, that's within that mile, there's, should be issues, right? Correct?
Uh, correct. There, there should be. Uh, correct. There, there'll be no issue to that, to that homeowner, again, over a mile away and on the other side of the I-10. So we do not anticipate, uh, any, any issues. Again, we, we've got, our partner has over 150 plants right now that they're operating. There's been so many advances with every different plant that opens. There's a lot of automated shutdown systems. If there's even a sniff of a problem, but you are correct, in the event of a, a major emergency event, um, there, there should be no impact on that house. And again, we will have onsite response plan, offsite response plan and do, and I just learned this morning that they will do annual training onsite with first responders, because I think that's so important. You can come up with a plan, but if you don't refresh the plan, um, and, and, and keep everyone up to date.
My last question is, and I don't know if you're required to, but did you, did you reach out to the Luke Air Force Base? Is this within their white training routes or anything?
Uh, Chair and Commission, you, you see, I looked, I looked back. As you see on your agenda, Stephen Anderson. I, I am not Stephen Anderson. I am pinch hitting for Stephen Anderson. Uh, so I just had to look back to our team to ensure, yes, we have, we have notified Luke Air Force Base. Correct, yes.
Chairman Schlesser?
Mr. Montoya?
Yes, um, as a representative from District Five, um, on the commission, um, want to share that, uh, about a month ago, I participated in a webinar hosted by, uh, Dr. Er, President, uh, Michael Crow of Arizona State University on the emerging green economy. And, um, hydrogen facilities, uh, were mentioned as part of that presentation. So, uh, I'm really glad to see that, um, that we have a project coming before us. And, um, you know, being able to provide, uh, green and clean energy is going to be very important as our economy moves forward. So, uh, just want to share that I'm in full support of this project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the commission have questions? The applicant? Hearing none, thank you. Is there anybody from the public in the audience who wish to speak? Did you fill out a card, man? Do you wish to speak? Do you wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Marguerite Cambeis, and I do live out in that area.
You're welcome.
Pardon?
I said welcome.
I'm deaf on this, sir, and hard of hearing here. What was that?
I said welcome.
Oh, thank you. I want you guys to seriously oppose this. You're in the backyard, I'm in the backyard. It's going to destroy our water. We have a water shortage already. We don't need any more complications out in our area. Hydrogen plants create more climate toll. It is so huge that it is responsible for more climate pollution than the entire country of Germany. Yes, everybody says hydrogen batteries are better. They are, but the process of getting those batteries made destroys our climate. It destroys our air and our ozone, and we don't need that out there. We have been fighting out there to keep our area clean, not to be opening our doors to something that's going to destroy our air. I just moved out there two years ago to get out of Phoenix, to get into an area that was clean. And now you want to bring this in? I oppose it. My family opposes it, and I am from a very large family. I have 12 children, 45 grandchildren, and 15 great grandchildren. We all oppose this plant. Check the other states that have approved it and put it in place. Their residents are very, very, very regretting those plants in their states. So I ask you, please, do your research before you allow this plant to destroy our area. It's going to destroy our water, it's going to destroy our air. We don't need that. That's why we live rural, so we don't have to put up with it. Please, we beg you, to really consider the climate control and the climate and what it's going to do to our water. I live off a well. I don't have city water. I live off a well. I don't need it contaminated. I live off that groundwater. Please deny this. Thank you.
Do you have one question for you? You said this was.
I'm sorry, wait.
I do have one question for you. You said this was in your backyard. How, are you the individual that lives in the home within one mile?
No.
How far do you live?
I live about 20 miles away, but it's still going to affect us. We're in a very windy area out there. Everything flows through the air. It's still going to come to us. It doesn't matter if we're a mile or 30 miles. That wind, look at all the fires from Canada. How much of that smoke ended up here in the US? How much of it ended up right here in Arizona? It's still going to affect us, even though we're more than a mile away. We beg you, please do not allow this in our backyard.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, David, is there anybody on webinar wishing to speak?
There's no one online.
If the applicant wished to rebut, please.
Chair, Commission, thank you so much. Again, Lindsey Shuby, for your record, there was some reference to battery. Again, this is not, this is not a plant that has anything to do with batteries. This is clean energy, and there will not be pollution out of it. That's what's great about it. Again, we're taking H2O water and splitting it via electricity and ending up with hydrogen and oxygen. So actually, the byproduct of this is oxygen. So, you know, again, a positive benefit of that. As far as water, again, as you probably read in your staff report, Joseph did such a great job, there was original concerns about water, but we have satisfied all of those. We are in the Harkaway Hill groundwater basin, and we've got water rights and we've acquired another 40-year supply of long-term storage credits. So we don't have water concerns. But there's, again, this is a green energy that should, that is, we're trying to take away pollution that you would normally get from diesel, so.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions of the Commission? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public forum. Any further discussion from the Commission? I have a motion on the CPA case first, please.
Commissioner Slasher?
Commissioner Montoya?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve CPA 2023-009 and Z 2023-059 with conditions A through G as presented by staff.
Okay, we have to do one at a time, so I'll call on you again after we, the first vote. I have a motion to approve the CPA case. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Swart. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landal?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindblom?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of eight to zero.
All right, thank you, most encouraged.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Swart?
Yeah, I just want to let you know, I didn't make that second, so if we could correct the record.
Oh.
That was me. Yes, Commissioner Lawrence seconded.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
Commissioner Montoya, would you like to make a motion on the zoning case?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve Z 2023-059 with conditions A through G as presented by staff.
Okay, thank you, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Montoya. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Commissioner Lawrence.
Commissioner Lawrence seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landal?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman, that's an approval by a vote of eight to zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good day. Moving on, item number five, regular Jenna garage condominium, carefree garage condominiums. I'd like to present, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Case Z 2023-089, carefree garage condominium. The subject site is about five acres and is located on the south side of the Carefree Highway, about 800 feet west of Southern Street. Next slide, please. The site is located within the Carefree Highway unit corridor and the Daisy Mountain New River area plan, which designates the future land use as commercial. The site is within the City of Phoenix's municipal planning boundary, where it is designated for residential 0 to 2 gallons per. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting a zone change with overlay from Borough 43 to C2 ZPD for the development of a garage condominium. It should be noted that this is a high-end extension of the self-storage use and is not residential. For the applicant's descriptions, the garage units would be for sale and will be customizable by future owners. The use of the garages will likely be akin to a private non-commercial shop that owners will use to tinker with projects. Next slide, please. The requested overlay will limit the use onsite to only self-storage and ancillary uses. DAF notes that the applicant is also requesting a reduction in maximum allowed height to 30 feet to near the adjacent rural residential properties. The City of Phoenix planning staff shared some concerns with the proposal, mostly centered around the fact that the proposed use does not match the city's future land use destination for this site. It is important to note that city staff provided a list of preferred conditions if the case was approved, and the applicant has agreed to include all of, agreed for all of them to be included in the recommended conditions. These include enhanced landscape requirements and addition of a multi-use trail along Carefree Highway. Staff received three emails of opposition as well as one email of support. The opposition centered around the general opposition to development of any kind on the site and the desire for land adjacent to the highway to remain undeveloped. The support email highlighted the recommended conditions, such as limiting the uses onsite as reasons for support. DAF recommends the Commission adopt a motion for approval of Z 2023-089, subject to conditions A through H. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mueller. Any questions of staff from the Commission? Hearing none of the applicant here, wish to speak?
I don't know if the applicant's here, but I signed up to speak. I'm a homeowner.
Okay, it's the applicant here.
I have the applicant online.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
Cory needs to unmute on their end, and then they should be able to speak. They got to unmute their audio. They're responding with a raised hand, but I'm not sure why they can't get their audio working.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, there you go.
Yes, go ahead, please state your name for the record.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name for the record.
Apparently Cory can't hear us. Looks like they're trying to adjust their audio.
Okay.
I'm trying to send them information so they can get audio reconnected. There, Cory, are you, can you hear us?
David, is there a way you can send him a message just to present, even though he can't, he can't hear us?
Sorry about that. I don't know why.
Yeah, we can hear you, Cory.
Cory, are you there?
Can we proceed? And I'll try to reconnect.
No, just proceed with your statement, please.
I'm trying to let Cory know we can hear him.
Oh, again, I apologize for the connectivity. Sorry about that. But again, what I like to state is, again, we appreciate your time and giving us the opportunity to bring this project to the carefree area. We feel that it'll bring a lot of value to the community around us. We don't think that there's going to be any issues with the traffic. It's very limited there. Again, I think it's something that will make aesthetically good-looking for off the carefree highway, and once you see our project, we hope you guys will approve that.
He can't hear us.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest this item be continued to the next one, in that we not have any further testimony, because he's unable to hear and unable.
Yeah, I agree. Can you confirm one more time, David, that he can't hear us?
Yeah, I tried to confirm that with him through messaging. He, at this point, I haven't had him respond to any of my messages, so.
Hey, do we need a motion to continue?
We're going to see if we can call him. We're looking for a phone number. Because it's not a government phone, we don't want to give the number over. I have no idea who has.
He's in mine.
Been at the same number 20 years, everybody's got my number.
Darren, do we need a motion to continue then, or what do we do?
Please continue without me trying to.
We don't have this phone number.
He's asking us to continue.
So the applicant's asking for a continuance, right? Correct? And we need a motion for that?
He actually asked us to continue without him. That was how he phrased it.
So we need a motion to continue, right?
No, I'm not asking for a continuance. Please proceed.
Can you hear me, sir?
So sure it's going to be approved, that's why they're not worried about it.
David, could you please in the chat tell him that since he cannot answer questions or rebut?
No, I'm not asking for a continuance.
Yeah. Hey, David, could you ask him for a phone number, or we can call him and put him on our.
Yeah, I've asked three times, Darren, for a phone number for us to call him. I don't know, he's asking me questions, and somehow he's hearing, someone's communicating with him what we're saying in the auditorium, but I don't know who it is, because it's not me, he's not responding to my questions.
Who's on first?
Followed by the pound or hash sign. You entered no digits. Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
All right, we just need to move along then. So then, you're advising us to make a motion to continue. Okay, I'm going to close the public forum. Could I have a motion to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue case Z 2023-089 to the November 2nd, 2023.
Motion for Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second?
Motion seconded.
Second from Commissioner Landal. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landal?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman, that's a vote of seven to zero to continue this case.
Thank you. For the record also, I assume you're David Wilson?
Yeah.
He submitted a card in opposition. So as you heard, it's, no, you're not allowed to speak, but unfortunately, sometimes we have.
So sure it's going to be approved, that's why they're not worried about it.
David, could you please in the chat tell him that since he cannot answer questions or rebut?
No, I'm not asking for a continuance.
Yeah. Hey, David, could you ask him for a phone number? We can call him and put him on our.
Yeah, I've asked three times, Darren, for a phone number for us to call him. I don't know, he's asking me questions, and somehow he's hearing, someone's communicating with him what we're saying in the auditorium. But I don't know who it is, because it's not me, he's not responding to my questions.
Who's on first? All right, we just need to move along then. So then, you're advising us to make a motion to continue. Okay, I'm going to close the public forum. Could I have a motion to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue case Z 2023-089 to the November 2nd, 2023.
There's a motion for Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second?
Motion seconded.
Second from Commissioner Landalt. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landal? Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Lindblom?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Chairman Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman, that's a vote of seven to zero to continue this case. Thank you.
For the record also, I assume you're David Wilson? He submitted a card in opposition. So as you heard, it's, no, you're not allowed to speak, but unfortunately, sometimes we have these technical difficulties, and thank you for coming down, but it is what it is. Yeah, all right, any other matters, Darren? Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you all very much.
Thank you.